Here with the trivia, sir.
He's not coming in?
Somehow I had it.
Lucky.
Frank was actually off for a few days.
Yes. He actually doesn't.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. I also. So I kind of thought maybe he didn't.
Okay, we'll get started here. We're broadcasting live. Once again, this is a special meeting dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Nine AM. The meeting is called at nine AM for the purpose of discussing a discussing a pending settlement agreement. All rise for a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a roll call clerk. Okay, we have a roll call clerk.
Mr. Cantal Mesa. Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Here. Here.
Mr. Malloy. Mr. Malloy.
Here. Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Ms. Frenchco.
Absent. Absent.
Hey, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Vice Code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G three to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes one twenty-one dot twenty-two G three to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action.
A second that motion. A second that motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa. Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Malloy. Mr. Malloy.
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Frenchco. Ms. Frenchco.
Back momentarily. Back momentarily.
Then Cindy brought everything up here as far as our from the inside. Then Cindy brought everything up here as far as our from the inside.
Okay. Okay. Sure. Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
You want us to wait for anything? Do you get set up or? Okay. Okay, at this time, I will make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code one twenty-one dot twenty-two G three to conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending or imminent court action.
A second that motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Okay, and at this time, I'll adopt a like to adopt the settlement agreement between the Board of Commissioners.
Wait, read that again. Motion to?
I'm I'd like to make a motion to adopt the settlement agreement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to adopt a settlement agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Paula Vavoda Klotz.
A second that motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Okay, this time we'll have public discussion as related to the Vavoda Klotz lawsuit and or settlement agreement. And with that, though, I'm going to start out that we have a couple of things that I want to enter for the record. First of all, this is a statement from the county's Corso attorney. And this is in regards to the settlement. And it says after protracted litigation with its clerk Paula Vavoda Klotz, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners can report that the matter has been resolved in exchange for monetary consideration that will be paid to Ms. Vavoda Klotz by the county and its risk pool. Ms. Vavoda Klotz will dismiss her claims with prejudice and ultimately resign her employment. The board thanks Ms. Vavoda Klotz for years of professionalism and service to Trumbull County. Setting an lawsuit is never an easy decision, and it should not be mistaken for an omission of liability. Hours of painstaking deliberation negotiations were spent to reach this compromise. With the assurance of litigation counsel that the terms of the settlement are reasonable and suitably advantageous to the county, the board concluded the trial would have been too costly a distraction regardless of outcome. That's from the insurance company. Now, we also have a statement from the plaintiff. And this is from the plaintiff, her lawyer and her. And it's a statement on the federal lawsuit against Trumbull County Board of Commissioners that states Paula Vavoda Klotz has agreed to settle her federal lawsuit against Trumbull County Board of Commissioners. Vavoda Klotz lawsuit alleged an extensive and egregious campaign of discriminatory harassment and retaliation orchestrated substantially by Commissioner Nikki Frenchco. Vavoda Klotz's filing with the court detailed how Frenchco took office in January twenty twenty-one and set about immediately trying to terminate Vavoda Klotz or force her resignation. Vavoda Klotz's filing further shows that over the next two and a half years, Frenchco never stopped harassing and retaliating against Vavoda Klotz. Vavoda Klotz was confident that she would have prevailed had the case gone to trial, primarily because much of the harassment was livestreamed, posted online, or documented emails and text messages obtained during discovery. However, the settlement will once and for all put an end to the harassment as Vavoda Klotz will resign as part of the agreement. Vavoda Klotz thanks the majority of the board for recognizing the trauma inflicted on her and for engaging in extensive, good faith negotiations that resulted in a compromise in the best interest of all parties. And this was from Attorney David Truman and Stuart Torch of the law firm Employment Law Partners LLC. And they were proud to represent the Vavoda Klotz in this matter. So we'll enter this for the record also. And I believe Commissioner Kim Lacy, you have your own statement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last few years have been extremely stressful and difficult for all of us here in the office, but for Paula in particular. I personally am humbled by the professionalism that she's shown throughout these incredibly hard times. If you think about it, you never once saw Paula respond in kind to criticism or nasty comments, not once. Not even when she was called out publicly during board meetings or on social media. Paula's always been respectful to all three commissioners equally, no matter how she was treated in return. Her grace under fire sets a high standard for the Commissioner's office, and it's a standard that all of us should aspire to. County government is a political environment full of competing ideas, competing objectives, and competing priorities. There's no getting around that. A commissioner should be able to debate ideas freely, criticize constructively, and hold each other accountable without demeaning ourselves or our employees. This is the least Trumbull County deserves. At the end of the day, this was about Trumbull County minimizing its risks and not expending any more resources and time and patience on this matter, and I'm glad we're moving forward. As as our attorney told us, at the end of the day, you know you have a good settlement when nobody thinks they won. And unfortunately, no one wins in this settlement, but Trumbull County can put it behind us. We can focus on morale. We can focus on our employees and moving this county forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
And also just like to state, I've only been here seven months. So a lot of the 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 stuff I learned from discovery and when I read the depositions from Commissioner Frenchco and the depositions of Ms. Vavoda Klotz. And I got to say some of the stuff I read in there was sickening. Some of the stuff was was. Some of the stuff was, was absolutely disgusting. I don't think any workplace should ever tolerate actions that occurred. Um. In this position and occurred toward her. Uh, I hope that all county employees see this. Uh, the settlement and they, they look at this too. And realize that we're not going to tolerate this type of activity in any way, shape or form. We're not going to allow it. I as a board member, uh, Commissioner Cannon Malasa as a board member of the majority of the board. Uh, we will do everything we can to protect our employees. Uh, protect the morale, protect the integrity of this office. Um. And I'm, I'm happy. Uh, that we were able to part amicably with Mr. Vodaklats. She will be missed. She was a, a great clerk. Uh, there's big shoes to fill, uh, in her absence. And, and we wish her. Um, the best in going on and moving on with their life and. Uh, healing from the deep wounds that she has incurred. Um, here in this office, especially by Miss, Miss French go. Uh, I think, uh. When the public judges this and they look at it, they need to dig deep into this to see what really happened, to look at the facts, read the statements. Um. Read the depositions, do the research before they make comment on this. And imagine if that was your daughter, your wife. Um, or loved one in your family had had to endure this at work. Uh, the settlement, I believe. Um. As Mister Cam Lacy said, there's never a win in this. Um. But my heart goes out, uh, to Mr. Vodaklats. And I hope that, um, she's able to, to heal, move on with her life. And, and potentially maybe we'll see her back again someday when there's smoother waters here in the county. Are there any questions at this time? Take any questions from the press? If you have anything regarding. This case, we're happy to answer them now while we're here. This is the only public opportunity we have to answer those questions collectively. So if you, if you have them. We, we do have the settlement amount here. I have a copy of it that you can have. Um. What, what ended up happening with this and it, it says public. Um, Corsa came up with the settlement. There's negotiations, of course, in negotiations with this. But the final outcome is that she will receive a monetary. Um. Agreement from the insurance company. And in addition to that. Um, she will be, uh. Uh, on paid leave, uh, for almost a year. Receive her health insurance, receive her credit and time to be here, uh, while she's able to go and, and heal. Um, get some treatment from this and, and hopefully. Um, recover and the board, um, feels is necessary. That we have some skin in the game on this thing too, to show fault and not just blame the insurance company for just paying. Paying a settlement. Uh, there's also a lump sum that the board is throwing in on top of what the insurance company is paying. And, and that again is the very least, the very least that I can do. Or Commissioner Cannon Mesa could do for the suffering that she's endured. Um, it's not enough. It's, it's never enough. What is, what is a value that's enough? Um. To regain two and a half years of your life and, and endure some of the things she's endured. So. Um, that was a way that we felt was fair through negotiations that. Um. That the board had a little bit of skin in the game with that too. So she will resign at the time when it, when it's done. I believe that's in July of next year. And, um, and with that, you know, she was in good standing. And if the current. Uh, things change, you know, she is not exempt from coming back to employment or, or being invited back to, to be an employee here again, but. She can decide that on her own. She has a year to go out there and clear her head. And, and he'll, you know, start to heal the scars that, uh, that she's incurred here in this office.
Moving forward, what would be something that you guys are doing on your own end in the office to make sure something like this never happens again?
I'd say the first thing we have is we have policies that have been adopted in reaction react. We've had to play defense here a lot. We're in uncharted waters. Uh, no one has ever dealt with a situation like this before. Where we have a commissioner that you can't control. We can't fire her. We can't sanction her. We can't impeach her. Um, the public can't remove her as, as people have seen. You know, the only place they can do that is at the voting, you know, the polls, uh, in, in next March. Um, but that's, that's up to the public to, to handle that. We can't do anything about it. But in, inside. We have adopted policies where employees can't go to see her alone in her office. Um, we have a door up front that we keep closed for safety reasons. Um. Whole bunch of little things here and there that we have to keep adopting policies to keep the employees safe. And, and I think that the employees have seen that recently. They know. Um, that if there's harassment, they know if they feel that they are, they are being abused in any way. They come to one of the commissioners. We take it seriously. It isn't something we overlook. Um, there have been times even recently where, uh. The other commissioner has asked for discipline on an employee and we clearly. Did not back her up on it because we felt it was in, in more of a derogatory harassment, uh, toward that employee. So. I guess the awareness is the first thing now that we know that, you know, these cuts. Cut deep. And, and we have been. In- involved in much litigation and probably more to come. Um, that. Uh, to the best of our ability, that's all we can do is try to protect them as humans and watch out for them and, and. Shield them from, um, from any abuse that way. We can't control what she says on social media. We can't control. Um. Emails or, or things that are out there or hateful, hurtful words. From some of the followers or people that, that condone that activity. Um, but, um. It's not going to come out of this office and from any employee. And especially it's got to start at the top and we gotta do everything we can to make sure that type of stuff does not. Come from our board. As much as we can control it.
I mean, and I agree and I concur, but at the end of the day, we're all duly elected, like, you know, elected officials. Uh, if this isn't enough in, in reading the depositions and in reading some of the statements. If this isn't enough of a self-awareness and a wake-up call. Um. To sort of know that. You know, um, how you conduct yourself matters. Your professionalism matters. What you say matters. How you treat others matters. Um, we, we need to, uh, uh, continue to stress that, but if, but if. As duly elected officials, we need to, we need to be able to self genuflect and look at this and say. Um, hopefully that. All of us, I mean, everybody, we can all use more training when it comes to this stuff, but at the end of the day, we look at this and we. Um. You know, uh, everyone can learn from it. This isn't, this isn't a win for the county by any means. Um, but at the end of the day. It's, it's not necessarily what we want. But it was what needed to happen, um, unfortunately. So. Uh, it's all for naught if we don't learn from it and if, uh, a commissioner doesn't learn from it. So. Uh, I hope, uh, with all my heart that she does. And, and that we can move forward and, um. Raise our standards in the, in the, in the county. So, thank you.
And it is, you know, there is, there's real money on the line here. There's real jeopardy with our insurance company paying settlements out. But we have to do the right thing. What's right is right and. This could have went to trial. It would have been costly. And, and to be frank, I, I think. Commissioner Cannon Lacy and myself would have been the worst witnesses the insurance company would have ever had. Cause we, we saw things. We, we gave depositions ourselves. We saw things occur in the office and I'm not gonna lie about that stuff. The stuff that I saw. Uh, I, I, we told our attorneys, we're not gonna lie. And I think they made a decision too. Um. That it's best to settle this thing. It's best to settle it with the best deal they can get for both parties. Um. Because I, I really don't think they, they wanted myself or Commissioner Cannon Lace on the stand testifying.
And Commissioner, at the end of the day, this is, uh, this has been deemed a hostile work environment by three different. Uh, HR directors. And, uh, when you couple that with the, the, the testimony that would be given, the evidence. Uh, that would be given during a trial. This is about minimizing the county's risk. And this is about not expending more resources than we need to and cutting our losses unfortunately. Financially.
Any other questions? And, and I guess, you know, the, just in conclusion, it's a sad day for Trumbull County. It's a sad day that we're losing a great employee. And, uh. We all need to heal. I think our staff here needs to heal. This is kind of shook them a little bit. It, I've, I've been shaken up over this, this whole process. Uh, as, as Mister Cannon Mesa. And, uh. We really wish we could do more. We really wish we had more power, but that's up to legislators to, to do that. Um, but. I, I can pledge that. Uh, as long as I'm on the board, I will fight to make sure that I'll protect any employee from this abuse again, you know, the, the stuff that I read that occurred. In the past and the stuff that, that I've seen, um, here in the office is, uh, abominable and, and should not be tolerated. And I know we're gonna get. You know, we're, we're gonna get abuse from some of the public saying you shouldn't send her tax dollars on this. You're paying employees off. You should have fought. You should have done this. They weren't in our shoes. They didn't see what we see. They, they didn't, you know, I, I urge them to read the depositions, to read the settlements, talk to employees, judge for yourself. And, and again. If that was your wife, your daughter, your mother, um. You wouldn't tolerate it either. So.
Well said, Commissioner.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Um. Motion to, are we adjourning the meeting now? Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Mister Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Miss French cow.
Thank you all.
We do have copies of those.